Good evening to the Brookfield Selectment's Meeting of Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. If you'd like to rise and join me in saying a pledge of allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to entertain a warrant to approve, I mean entertain a motion to approve warrants for April meal taxes for 2/28/17, 8/28/17 for 12:54. An approval wire warrant for meal taxes for 8/28/17 for $26.32. Approval wire warrant for June meal tax for 8/28/17 for $15.42. Approve an expense warrant for 8/29/17 for $289,592.71. And approve a payroll warrant for 8/29/17 for $166,630.25. And approve an expense warrant for 8/30/17 for $5,712. And approve an expense warrant for 8/31/17 for $78,022.54. And approve an expense warrant for 9/1/17 for $5,274.88.
You have a motion to that?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we're going to approve the Selectment's Minutes of 8/8/17. And I'd like to add a motion to-
Motion to approve?
To approve. And then I'm going to also like a motion to approve the reports and minutes from other departments. EMS for monthly report for July 2017. Cultural Council minutes for 7/10/17. Town Hall Improvement Committee meetings from 7/21/17, 8/1/17, and 8/14/17. And the Advisory Committee meetings for 8/10/17.
So you have a motion for both the Selectment's Minutes and the acknowledgment of reports?
Okay. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have an announcement. Work has been done on the Dunn Brook Bridge. Has begun. Please be advised that the bridge is expected to remain closed at least until September 30th. Please plan your route accordingly. And Tyler Wolin, District Aide to Senator Ann Gobing, will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from 10 to 11 a.m. Wednesday, September 20th, and all around. And our first thing on our agenda is a short session of public access. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say this is?
I have a couple of questions.
What did you find out on the smoking process with the town employees? You said you were going to look into that two weeks ago.
We have a policy.
Okay. So I see town employees smoking, so I'm just asking you where it's going.
We have a policy, and it's going. If you have a complaint, I would register it with either the chairperson of that or superintendent or the administrative assistant.
Okay. Think that will do any good? Probably not.
If you pull one right, David will-
I'm just bringing it-
If you pull one right, David will-
Okay. I'm just bringing it to your attention, that's all. We have two seasonal workers working that I've noticed. And we also have a person from the Warren Highway Department working in our town as well, and they're getting paid. Is there a reason? Can you tell me what's going on?
I didn't know we had two seasonal, and I didn't know that we had someone from Warren.
Are you watching, are you reading the warrants before you sign them?
Yes, I'm looking.
I'm watching them too, and this individual is getting paid. And I was just wondering why he's getting paid through the Highway Department.
So we have two seasonal now. And one from Warren?
Well, he went, he used to work for us here. Now, I'm sure he's still with Warren. I don't know if he's down here making signs, or what.
So, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I know at one point I had swung down to Highway. And the current state of affairs is that we don't have somebody that's willing to take on a 40-hour-a-week seasonal role. Okay? So what the superintendent, the Highway Superintendent, has is several people across all of them still are not working to the hours level that was established by budget for the seasonal work.
So then he's, he's bought up the hours?
Right. So one of the folks works, I think, as an EMT somewhere, and is on a 4-2 schedule. So they are only available maybe two days a week, one week, and maybe three days a week, another week. So when you add all of those people up together-
It comes up to 40 hours.
It comes up to less than 40 hours still.
Yeah, even less than 40.
So I'm really not concerned how we split those hours while the work's getting done.
No, that's how, I'm not concerned with it either, as long as he's-
Okay, but I think it's going over 40 from what I see. I'll get the warrants, yeah.
I'll double check, but here's the thing. It's 40 hours for a period of time. There were weeks when we did not have 40 hours. Okay? So if it's a little bit over 40 with two and a half people right now, and we didn't spend that budget getting the work done earlier in the season, then I really, if it's incrementally over 40 right now, it's really not an issue.
I can give, I'll give Cindy a clap.
Yeah.
Cindy. And then you claim that there's somebody from Warren that's working also?
Yeah, I see-
He used to come in and periodically, just out of the goodness of his heart, do signs for us. Now he's just coming in and getting paid when he actually does the signage. It's just, he's a worker for us. So it doesn't matter that he works for Warren, he's just-
No, no, I understand it, but I'm saying we've got three seasonal workers now.
Yeah, but he added up, it's still less than one.
Well, I can't say that that's the case.
Well, I will check on this data.
Yeah, why don't you do that for me?
I will check, but we will have an answer for you next week.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if advisory is interested in it, then that's one thing, but I don't know that we owe him an answer on how many hours people are working as a private citizen.
No, but I mean, if he's asked us to check on-
No, I'm a citizen, and I can ask that, and I can get an answer from you. Yes, Beth?
And then he can always call Karen if he needs it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Because I was just wondering why we've got so many people here. Now, can you- Remember now, six months. We've got six months.
Yeah, we understand that date.
Not just dollars and cents, it's six months.
So-
Six months. Started in April.
Actually-
That's the way the bylaws, bylaws read.
So what's required, and I have to, I do have to go back to the bylaws, but I don't actually think it's phrased exactly like that. But we have to stay below, I know according to state law it's 980 or 960 hours, and it's some other number that's a little bit lower for our bylaws. So it's, this magical six-month thing has nothing to do with it.
It's not magical, it's written in the bylaws.
I think it do have to be done by November.
It's very clear. Yeah, it's very clear, Beth.
Let's put it this way, we have work to be done, somebody's doing the work.
Somebody's doing the work.
And we don't have, none of those people have been there long enough to come close to six months by the time it's all said and done.
In the real world, when you appoint a Highway Superintendent, he takes care of it. If he's having a problem, then you make a written complaint to the Selectment, which I haven't seen in the past since 1970.
Well, like I said, Ken, I will check, and I'll get to relay it to Karen, and if anybody's interested, Karen will have to answer. Okay.
I got one other question. What was put down on the roads today around town? A lot of people have been asking.
It's called chip seal. We've had that advertising, like, for weeks, actually, that this is going to get done.
Yeah, folks have been talking about it.
Okay, I'm just, I'm pretty much up on it, but I want everyone else to know, because a lot of people have been asking me.
Okay.
So that's, do we, is that something we do with roads that are fairly new? Is there a timeframe that we put it down?
So the concept with chip seal-
Yeah.
It's called chip seal because it takes across the whole road, so that any cracks, if water gets underneath, this avoids it. Instead of going around with a little compressor and trying to fill up the top, they do the whole road. So it's good for 10 years.
Yeah, and they do, they do, they do the cracks first, and then you do the surface road, and it's a way to extend the life on roads, so we don't have to do a full rebuild of roads.
Okay, so now everybody will know. Glad you explained that. Okay. All right, thanks.
Yep. Now, we have on our agenda the Advisory Board, and we'd be, we have a lot of new members this year, and we're happy that we have a lot of new faces on the board, so we'd like to have an introduction of the new members. We'd like to start over here on the left. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Do you have to smile for a group picture?
My name's Steve Gillis. I'm Chair of the Committee, and I'll say this, and then everyone can introduce themselves. So we're just here to introduce ourselves, so that we are currently working on a series of goals and our own agendas, and our, you know, to pull together a sense of direction, which we would like to reapproach you and other department heads with, to sort of lay out how we intend to work together and move forward. And the rest of us here can introduce ourselves.
Maureen Mariano, I'm the recorder, I guess you'd call it now?
Secretary.
The Kansas Secretary, so whatever Ken needs. And I do the minutes, you know, and-
Well, you're new, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you for your minutes.
You're welcome. I didn't know I had to give them, Karen's so helpful.
And welcome aboard, Ken, you're a new face also.
Been around a long time.
I know you've been around a long time, but you're on the board now, so it's a new face on the board.
Oh.
It's nice to see you.
That's right, yeah.
And this-
Bob Falter.
Bob, Bob's been on for-
Vice Chair.
For a couple of years now. And then we'll go to the bathroom and start from the left.
Curtis Schoen, the newest member of the board. Just joined up here in July.
Welcome aboard.
Robert Burns, I've been on the board for quite a while, so everybody knows me.
Thank you for serving all the years. And then we have-
Ron Far.
And good evening, and welcome aboard to you also, Mr. Falter.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you, face on the board.
Looking forward to working together. Thank you.
And I presume you all are also in touch with capital improvement, because I know Mr. Falter is on that as well.
Yes.
And I know that there's a lot of talk about getting some more coherent kind of policies and directions to go, so.
As part of our vision is to make sure we're talking to everyone.
Do you want to mention that we're still having to do the tour of vacancies?
Oh, we have two vacancies? We still have two vacancies?
Right, we have one.
One.
We have three interviews.
Okay. Okay, so then when you have the final one, then you bring it to us, and then they're on, then they're on until the end of June of next year, and then you'll be reappointed.
Okay.
Very well.
So anything else new going on with the board?
Is there anything you need from us that we're not, we're all new, obviously, so we're all just trying to get to know each other.
Yep.
Trying to get along.
Right, it's totally covered with cause.
Our next meeting is next week.
Okay.
I know there's a, many things were postponed from this past town meeting, so I'd like to get it up to speed as to where that is at, and town meeting and anything else coming up in October, so.
We don't have a town meeting except for October.
Is it special?
We are going to have a special, but there's really no dates set yet. I had talked to the town accountant about that today. And last year, we didn't have one until early December, because right now, we're getting, you know, with the whole new staff that we have on, we're waiting, we're having an audit done for '16 and '17 for the close-up. And so until we know what we have for free cash, we really can't have a town meeting. So even if it's in the beginning of December, it could be that.
Is there anything that we need to know that was carried over because of not knowing about the free cash from the May meeting that as a new committee, some of us aren't aware we should be?
I don't think so.
Somebody will let us know if there is-
Oh, yeah, we'll let you know.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think part of what they may be looking for is that what we probably want to do is, once we've got the finalization from the account restructuring and the audit that's going on, we may want to do a joint meeting to share with them the results, so that they can get a good foundation of where we are as a town financially. And at that point, what we should probably do is pull the, we should start pulling together the warrant, even if we don't have a date with the capital items that we left aside.
But I don't think we should, I think it's too soon though, Beth, to get a warrant put together.
Oh, yeah.
It's way too soon.
Right. Well, that's what I was saying, I was saying first the meeting, at first the meeting with regards to where the town stands, and then once we've done that, we'll start working together with the warrant based off of that.
They're still working, you know, there's a lot of work to be done, and that's what they're working on right now. One thing I would like to ask, have you got, did the, I don't even know, Selectment's Office, did you have the appropriation sheet from the town clerk yet of monies that we did spend?
Yes, we got the ledger.
No, no, the town clerk has to do it, it's an appropriation sheet.
Oh, no, we don't, no, no.
Well, he should have had it to you by now. It's an appropriation sheet, and it shows, you know, where the monies come from. And then he should also have the budget to you also, so that you have the budget.
No, yes.
We'll probably get in touch with him with that, or Karen, maybe we can talk to him about that.
Karen, you were kind enough to reinstitute us getting a copy of the ledger when one is done each time.
Yeah.
And Bobby Barnes just claims to me that he always got a hard copy, because he doesn't have computer access.
Oh, okay.
Ken, can you arrange that?
Sure, I can print it out and put it in the Advisory Board's mailbox. Is that what you want?
Is that what you want?
Okay.
And like what I said, the appropriations sheet, that is what is spent, the monies that are spent at town meeting, and where they all come from.
Right.
So he should have given you one for the special that we had, and you should have had one for the annual, and then you should have had the whole budget.
Well, the annual, we have the annual?
That comes from him, it's certified by the town clerk.
Who's he?
Michael, Michael Siri.
He got out of the habit of providing it unless he was asked for it.
Well, he had, no, he came without the habit, Beth, of doing that. That is something that has to be done.
Oh, I can hear-
I did it every year for 22 years, and I think he can do it too.
Oh, I agree, I'm saying if they didn't ask for it, they would have hit the seed.
Well, they shouldn't have to, they shouldn't have to ask. These things have to be done by June 30th, before the new fiscal year starts. And he's got to get them done, so we've got to talk to him, so he has them.
Thank you. All electronic would be great.
I hope so.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on the board?
That's enough.
Well, thank you all for coming in and introducing yourselves, and it's nice to see the new board here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, we are, we're early here, do we want, Karen, so stop until 7:00. So why don't we do the special use permit? Oh, yeah, that's it. Do we have, we have a special use permit here for approval for Quavo Pond from the Weed, Hog, and Anglers. And we're going, they want to have this on 9/24/17, and I would like to motion to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And then signing that documentation, we have that. All right. Our next one here-
Number six.
Is number six, signed Mass Historical Final Report Documentation.
Yeah, you had done that earlier, but just if we could take just a minute, just so that people on the camera can see this document. This is the original copy of the Brookfield Archeological Survey Project Report, under the leadership of Mass Historical Commission, University of Massachusetts, the town of Brookfield. This is through Phase 3. I have two Phase 4 documents that we'll receive later this week or early next week, and then we will submit this, and with that, we will get a checkback from Mass Historical for $70,000 by $100. But just so that people understand the breadth of, if you just throw it down the stairs to see how far it goes, as far as the documentation. What I will say is that there are several recommendations that come out of this, maybe we can, because we have 12 minutes here, we'll take a minute. There were numbers of what are called features, there were numbers of burials that were found in the '60s, and there are additional burials, features, that were found at this time. What it's really saying is that the area of 15 acres is peppered with burials. And so the idea of thinking that you'd ever have an opportunity to reuse that property for development or otherwise is probably very suspect. In fact, the roadway that is there actually goes over two graves that were identified, so that the idea of having a roadway would be problematic. What is being suggested is that the open areas, as you enter the area, would be an area where you'd want the vegetation to grow back. What we've been doing for the last two years now is brush hogging that area to keep it open, so that we could actually get to the space, and so that the archaeologists could do the work. What it really says now is that we really shouldn't be brush hogging that area. If we're going to be brush hogging that area, it would be for some trails or paths, walking paths, and that sort of thing. And they can advise, the archaeologists can advise us as to the location. And as far as another area, it's a grassy area, it used to be a ball field by where the cemetery, oh, not cemetery, the swimming pool used to be. That would be an area that we could eventually look at as a picnic area or the like, and kept us open, our grassy area. But quite honestly, the idea of using this site for redevelopment and whatnot is probably similar to none. What this report does for us is it puts us at a line for national historic, national historic monies, such that we can preserve it. And I'd look to do something like that later in the fall or early next year, because again, the buildings that are there probably should come down, and again, we're waiting for a final analysis of that, but it's suggesting immediately they ought to come down. So with that, we'll talk more about it, but that's something we're to face into. Anyway, so that's Mass Historical. We've got one more minute.
One more minute, yeah.
One more minute, just to remind folks that the Brookfield Open Space and Recreation Plan, we're in the midst of updating it. We're looking for numbers of surveys to come back, to have some public meetings on the topic later in the fall, so we've now opened it up. We were closing the feedback to today, but we're going to continue it to the 12th now to get more surveys back. We've got about 70 surveys back so far, so just that. Thank you.
You're welcome. And once again, I thank you for all the work that you've been doing down there on the farm.
Thank you.
Okay, do we want to, okay, correspondents, want to go down? We don't have anything really under other.
No, I just did the other that I had.
Okay, okay, this is Matt Dodd from them. And we're pleased to inform you that the Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid for Fiscal 2018 will be total of $200 million statewide pending final legislation approval. This letter certifies that pending final passage of the bond authorization, your community's Chapter 90 appointment for Fiscal 2018 is $163,720. And that's from the Governor and the Lieutenant Governor. And this is all signed.
All good.
So why don't we go, we could probably go into the hearing early.
No, we can't start the hearing. We could recess for five minutes, and then come back and drink.
Got eight minutes left.
You want to recess then for eight, we'll recess for eight minutes?
Five minutes, actually, according to-
Yeah, I have 6:55. So we'll recess for five minutes, and then we'll start again. Okay, we resume again at 7:00 p.m., and we are going to have three hearings on, three hearings on properties that are health hazard and need to be demolished, and we're going to turn that part of our meeting over to Jeffrey Blake from our campaign, who is going to run the hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you know, my name is Jeffrey Blake, and I'm your Town Counsel. I would suggest that you open the first hearing with a motion, move to open the public hearing with respect to the pursuant to Chapter 139, Section 1, for a dangerous building at 30 Kimball Street in Brookfield.
Okay, I would like a motion.
You have that motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Right, Madam Chair, again, I'm Jeffrey Blake. Just to read into the record, it looks like on August 23rd, 2017, a notice was left at the last unusual 30 Kimball Street, Brookfield, and a copy mailed on 8/23/17 to an Evelyn Knight. The notice was regarding notice of a public hearing pursuant to General Law, Chapter 139, Section 1, for dangerous building at 30 Kimball Street, Brookfield, Mass. The notice says, "Dear property owner, pursuant to Chapter 139, Section 1, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing to determine whether the property located at 30 Kimball Street, Brookfield, Mass, is a nuisance to the neighborhood or dangerous, and if found to be so, to describe its disposition, prescribe its disposition, alteration, or regulation. A fire has made this dwelling unsafe and completely uninhabitable. No effort has been made to secure or restore property since time of the fire. The property is open to the weather and danger to children due to not being fenced off and open. The hearing has been scheduled for 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, in the banquet hall at the Brookfield Town Hall, Brookfield, Mass. As the record owner of the property located at 30 Kimball Street, Brookfield, Mass, you are invited to attend the hearing. You will be given an opportunity to be heard and to introduce evidence. You may be represented by counsel if you so choose, sent out by you, Madam Chair." I would suggest that this would be Exhibit 1 to this particular hearing, if you want. I think you have copies of it. I can hold these right here. So I guess we'll start, we being the town, we will start the hearing by presenting evidence. I have here the health agent, and could you state your name for the record, sir?
I'm Lee Jarvis.
And can you put your right hand in the air? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Jarvis, and you're the health agent for the town of Brookfield, is that correct? Okay, sir, I'm going to show you what are a number of photographs, and I would like it if you could just go through each photograph, show them to the board. I think they have copies, but just to describe to the board a couple of things. Do you recognize that property?
Yes, I do.
Is that the 30 Kimball Street?
Yes, it is.
Okay, can you go to the first photograph? Does that, is that a true and accurate copy? Are all the pictures true and accurate copies?
True and accurate of, as of today.
As of today?
As of today.
Okay. And can you just go through and let the board know exactly the conditions that are at that property?
Well, I concur with the letting sent, that it is open to the weather, is a danger to the neighborhood, to children, it's a place for insect and rodent cockroach, and should be addressed immediately.
Okay, in your opinion, should that property be demolished?
Yes. I don't think this one is to the point where it can be demolished.
Okay, thank you. And this will be an exhibit, and just for the court, for the board, you can see the windows are wide open to the weather, there's nobody living in there. You can see, again, this is even a better picture, open to all the elements, including young children and the like. A fire happens here.
It's an attractive nuisance.
A fire happens here, our first responders, while they probably wouldn't want to go in, if they believe there's somebody in there, they will go in, and that can cause a huge problem for us. This is the interior, is that correct? This is the interior of the building. As you can see, it hasn't been inhabited or cared for in a very long time. Same. All right, is anybody here for the property owner?
No.
Seeing no one, I suggest that you could close the public portion, the evidentiary here, unless somebody, does anybody else want to speak regarding this property? I would suggest that you can close the evidentiary portion of this, and then deliberate.
Motion to-
Motion to close.
Motion, second.
Okay, you now have the ability to prescribe a disposition of this property. First of all, you'd have to declare it a nuisance, or not. If you declare it a nuisance and a danger to the public, then you could go on and you could prescribe a remedy, anywhere from ordering the owner to fix it up, to remodel it, or to demolish it. to demolish it, and you know, really, the sky's the limit. And again, you also have the ability to give, you know, a prescribed timeframe for this to occur.
I would.
I'd make a motion that it is, in fact, a nuisance, and then the second is that it be demolished within 30 days.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
All right.
So now we'll close that.
So let me, okay, so back to the process. So we've declared that it should be removed.
You declared it a nuisance, removed.
And given that, do we go back to the communication again, looking to the owner to make that happen in 30 days?
Yes, the way the process works is you then, you're going to, I'll draft up an order for you. You will forward that to the property owner, giving them 30 days. If they fail to comply within 30 days, the statute seems to contemplate self-help, meaning the Board of Selectmen or the town can go in and do the demolition. I strongly recommend that we go to court and just get verification or authority from the court to undertake the demolition. Also, under Chapter 139, Section 3A, the town can then lien the property for the cost of the demolition. I do want to caution you, though, that the lien that we have is not our usual municipal tax super lien. We will get in line, we don't jump to, like most of our, a lot of our municipal liens, sewer water, the like, we jumped the line. Here, we won't, we'll be in an order. It's my understanding that, I didn't see any banks on here, so I'm not sure that any banks still are in the picture, which we would, we'll notice everybody that needs to be noticed.
Well, I have one quick question, which might be outside the scope of this, and I don't need an answer necessarily tonight, or at all if you deem that it's not worth getting an answer for, but just from a hypothetical standpoint, we have a lot of properties in town that have had homes on there for a while, that under the current zoning laws would be noncompliant or nonconforming to our zoning regulations. Normally, if another owner had the property, or if an owner has the property, and say a fire occurs, and then you tear down a building, you've got like two years on leave, according to our bylaw, to rebuild. Would we necessarily start the two-year clock if somebody wanted to redevelop that property from the date of the demolition, or would we have the option with something like this, if we wanted to allow an extension or allow a variance for when that property next changes hands, to give the new owners two years to put something down?
I think that that would most likely be up to your ZBA. That's a zoning determination, and it would be, provided, of course, that they are pre-existing nonconforming uses. It may not be, it may be a use that is allowed, and the structure may meet all the zoning requirements, so then by right, they could.
Like I said, I'm just asking kind of more from a theoretical, because I have no idea whether this particular one's informing or not.
No, it's a good question for these three, sure.
Okay, so we're all set, I'd like to have a motion to close the hearing on 30 Kimball Street.
I'll make the motion to close the hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right. Our next one?
I think we're going to have to, I hate to interrupt you, Madam Chair, but it says 7:15, and we do need to give.
So when is the appropriate time?
We have to recess again.
Five minutes is all of it.
Here are the exhibits for that. I don't know if you want me to give them.
I have them electronically, so.
I don't have them electronic.
No, I have them electronically, too. I did print them, because I saved them.
Yep.
I have a question for you. If the value of property.
Are you supposed to recess?
I'll make a motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, that's a lie? Five minutes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the meeting at 7:15.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next hearing is on 16 North Brookfield Road, and I'll turn that over to Attorney Blake.
And I suggest that we make a motion to open the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 139, Section 1, for a dangerous building at 16 North Brookfield Road, Brookfield, Massachusetts.
You have that motion.
I'd like to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, Madam Chair, a notice was sent, and I will read the notice into the record. A notice was sent, it looks like dated delivery was 8/11/17, to Eleanor Harris, regarding a notice of public hearing pursuant to General Law, Chapter 139, Section 1, for dangerous building at 16 North Brookfield Road, Brookfield, Massachusetts. Dear Property Owner, pursuant to General Law, 139, Section 1, the Brookfield Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing to determine whether the property located at 16 North Brookfield Road, Brookfield, Mass. is a nuisance to the neighborhood or dangerous, and if found to be so, to prescribe its disposition, alteration, or regulation. This dwelling is unsafe and completely uninhabitable. No effort has been made to secure or restore property to the, by the prior or current owner. It is also a danger to children due to not being fenced off and open. The hearing has been scheduled for 7:15 PM Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, in the banquet hall at the Brookfield Town Hall, Brookfield, Massachusetts. As the record owner of the property located at 16 North Brookfield Road, Brookfield, Mass., you are invited to attend the hearing. You will be given an opportunity to be heard and to introduce evidence. You may be represented by council if you so choose. And again, it was sent out by you, Madam Chair, and signed by you. So I would like to start, at least the presentation part of this, to you on the town's behalf. Again, I'm going to provide the health agent with a copy of some photographs, and again, sir, I suggest that you run the roll. Actually, why don't you just, we'll do it again, why don't you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you explain to the board what those photographs show?
These photographs are 6 North Brookfield Road, in Brookfield. The home that is.
16.
16. Didn't they say that? Oh, 16, I'm sorry. And the home is in such a state of disrepair, it's open to the weather, public nuisance.
Is it uninhabitable?
Inhabitable in its current state, and, you know, harborage for insects, rodents, and children.
Is it, in your opinion, a public safety nuisance and hazard?
Health and safety nuisance, correct.
And in your opinion, what should the disposition of this particular structure be?
In its state of disrepair, it should be demolished.
Thank you. And again, we'll put in the record, but we have five photographs. You can see the exterior of the building, it's all grown up. Here, again, open to the weather, open to, more importantly, open to children, vagrants, people going in there, setting fires or whatever. Our first responders have to go in, and that could result in a huge danger. Again, it's open, you can see the interior of the building, there's a lot of, for lack of a better word, junk. And the same here, you can see the interior of the building is significantly dilapidated. Now, is there anybody, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of the property owner? Is there anybody here to speak at all on this property? I suggest that you could now close the evidentiary portion of this hearing and make your disposition.
Okay, I will close.
I'll give you a motion to close the hearing.
To close the hearing.
I'll second that.
I would like to, I must have gone before, but.
Yeah, well, let's say aye.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Yep, those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to make a motion that probably within 30 days that we should demolish this because of the safety hazard.
So I'll give you the motion that we declare it a nuisance?
Right.
And then give the property owner 30 days to do demolish.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion on that? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So this is the same thing, come on, bring that down to the court.
Yep, we'll do all three of them together.
So a motion to adjourn until 7:30?
A motion to adjourn until 7:30.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'd like to open the hearing up again at 7:30. For a home on 4 South Maple Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, I suggest that we start with a motion to open the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 139, Section 1, for a dangerous building at 4 South Maple Street, Brookfield.
I would like to make a motion to open the hearing.
And I'll give you a second.
All in favor?
All right.
Madam Chair, I will start by reading the notice. The notice was addressed to Bernadette LaPointe, care of Jean Paul LaPointe. It looks like it was signed for and received on 8/11/17. The notice is regarding notice of a public hearing pursuant to General Law, Chapter 139, Section 1, for dangerous building at 4 South Maple Street, Brookfield, Mass. Dear Property Owner, pursuant to General Law's Chapter 139, Section 1, the Brookfield Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing to determine whether the property located at 4 South Maple Street, Brookfield, Mass. is a nuisance to the neighborhood or dangerous, and if found to be so, to prescribe its disposition, alteration, or regulation. Specifically, a fire has made this dwelling unsafe and completely uninhabitable. No effort has been made to secure or restore the property since the time of the fire. The hearing has been scheduled for 7:30 PM Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, in the banquet hall at the Brookfield Town Hall, Brookfield, Massachusetts. As a record, the property located at 4 Maple, 4 Maple, South Maple Street, Brookfield, Mass., you are invited to attend the hearing. You will be given an opportunity to be heard and to introduce evidence. You may be represented by council if you so choose. So again, I will open this hearing by, again, going to our health agent, and sir, you raised your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to show you some pictures. Can you explain to the board what those pictures are?
Those pictures are 4 South Maple Street. The building is in such a state of disrepair, trash, garbage, debris, roof caving in, open to the weather, unsafe for the neighborhood children, also for your first responders, harborage for animals and insects, public nuisance.
In your opinion, is it a public nuisance?
Absolutely.
In your opinion, what should be the disposition of this property?
That property should be removed.
Okay, all right. And again, members of the board, just so you can see, you can see the, while there are, there is some boarding up here, you can see this dormer right here has fallen in on itself. The second picture. Again, you can see the junk and the garbage for rodents, and also the hazard for the first responders, as the health agent just indicated. Again, additional junk and debris making it probably impossible to get in there, and that will be the end of the presentation. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the property owner?
John McQuaid. Who did you give that notice to? Again, Bernadette?
That notice went to Bernadette care of Jean, Jean Paul LaPointe.
John, John or Jean, which one?
It's J-E-A-N.
Okay, okay, John, okay, so he got the notice?
In fact, and I will, I'll read it in, in fact, he responded with a written letter to the board, and I will.
He said that he wanted to get some items out of the house?
I'll read the letter into the evidence.
He just wanted to make sure that you were aware.
Okay.
He has had time himself in North Brookfield, you know, I don't know if it's an elderly place, whatever it is, that he's living up in now, he has no license, no vehicle.
He did say that, and I'll read this in, but I don't know, I think there's a gentleman back here, are you here to speak on this property?
I'd like to speak about the property, yes.
Well, go ahead, before I read in.
Yes, my name is Roger Carroll, I'm a supporter to this property. I'd like to, I'm sorry, I'd like to request that town accelerate the demolition of this building on the grounds of safety. So on a number of occasions, the most recent yesterday, I've heard pieces of the building fall to the ground. So yesterday, I was out in my backyard, heard something fall, walked over to the back gate, saw a piece of the roof that gave way and fell to the ground. So as I walked around the property, I'm kind of looking for other hazards, I saw that the opening to the basement, or the, yeah, the opening to the basement was a wooden structure that was locked away, it was probably 18-inch wall that was open in it. When I looked down, it was filled with water, so obviously that would be a hazard, not only to children, adults, to any animals that are walking by. There've been cats that have taken residents up in that, in the property. The odor is really bad on, you know, warm humid summer days, not only the fire, but the rotting debris and garbage from the property really is a safety and a nuisance as well. So request that if you have to prioritize one of these buildings, prioritize this building to come down.
All right, we did receive on August 25th, 2017, a letter regarding the hearing of September 5th, 2017, from, is it Jean Paul?
John.
John, John Paul LaPointe. It says here, "Board of Selectmen, I will be unable to attend meeting on September 5th as I have no transportation. I've been working diligently to retrieve family heirlooms and memorabilia when I can procure a ride. The fire of last December was not only devastating, but a true loss. This year has been no better. In late winter, I lost my dear sister, and since then, I've been hospitalized multiple times for kidney stone operations. I have not only, I have had not only an economic loss, but also a physical loss. I am still retrieving family memorabilia from the house and selling these items to raise money to level the second floor, comma, roof, the first floor, and gut the interior. I can use some aid. I've been looking for someone with a truck to help move large pieces of furniture and to have some time that has been lost while residing in a nursing home for six months because it took that long to find housing. Also, losing time being hospitalized and recuperated. There are still 72 years of fond family memories which I wish to retrieve. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Again, I suggest that you could close the evidentiary portion of the.
I'd like to close the evidentiary portion of the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, I'll make the motion again, that this property is a nuisance and should be demolished within 30 days.
I'll make a motion?
No, then, I'll second it.
No, I'll second your motion, I'm sorry.
No, I think it's a sad state, sad state of affairs, but if we can give him the 30 days to retrieve what he can retrieve, and again, it's a safety hazard, but it's still his safety hazard rather than our safety hazard, giving those 30 days.
I was just talking to Attorney Blake a few minutes ago, and shouldn't the building and stuff, maybe he has something to say, that the place isn't even safe for somebody to go in there?
He owns the building.
I mean, it's his, I mean, it's his choice, if he wants to put himself at risk, that's his own.
Yeah, I don't know, sorry, can you take a look at the property? Fire chief, have you checked the interior of the property?
Not since, yeah, my name, Madam Chair, not since the morning the fire incident was concluded, and at that point, there's been no change to its status, and it was, as Mr. Jarvis and town council illustrated, it's beyond repair.
Even anything, even it is, and water damage, even.
The fire happened mid-winters, so the amount of water damage that was there, that everything left in the building has froze, refroze, thawed, refroze countless times, plus the snowfall, plus spring rains, so any items in there, you know, I wish him the best, but it's questionable of the most.
And I could certainly empathize with him, being, living here for many years, preparing the heirlooms. However, I would question any reasonable person wanting to enter the building based on the amount of damage that's left on that building.
The only notable item, the only physical item he may be able to treat safely is a motor vehicle on the premises, which he may be able to partway into. safely, is a motor vehicle on the premises, which he may be able to part away into having someone help him remove items from the interior, but there's a Jeep in the driveway that was there that day, I just don't believe it's registered, but that's the only item that's really safely a community goal for him, so, that, that's not responsible, that, I don't know where that falls into this process, because that's a separate item from the rest of the building, if we're gonna try to build it down, leave a motor vehicle there, it would still have title to, and for, obviously, the council on that.
Well, we'll give him...
About 30 days.
30 days to get things out of there, and after 30 days of...
Well, and if I understand correctly, he's responsible to take the building down, or the lien goes in place.
Well, i, i, if we take the building down, the lien would go in place.
Yeah, yep, so, and back to the idea of prioritizing, we could definitely prioritize this over the others.
Yeah. Yes.
So, we have a motion, did, did we vote on the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I did...
I have a question, you stated that you're gonna go to court, to, to make sure this, this process is legally done properly, is that gonna be, and does the 30-day statute after that, how does that work?
You, you, typically, the way this would work is that the board has ordered this to be demolished in 30 days. If it's not demolished in 30 days, then there's been a violation of the order, and then the court under the statute has the ability to go in, I'm straight, that, the, the town has the ability to go in to the court and ask that it be authorized to make, to the tear down. So, to answer your question, the property owners have 30 days to comply with this order.
Plus the time to the court system, so that it give them a little couple more ones.
It's, it's relatively quick.
Yeah.
Especially because, in, in light of the, the emergency nature of a lot of these type of situations, it will be quick.
Typically, 48 hours.
So, they'll give a little bit more time than 30 days.
Well, if, i, i, I would say, if you're advising him to get it done in the 30 days, I really would.
Oh, right, I, I was, yeah, I've already spoken to him about it.
And if somebody's helping...
He's, he's been allowing, you know, issues, so, you know.
But if you, if you're, if you're helping him, I, I would be very careful going in there.
Well, I'm not helping.
Okay.
So, we've made a motion.
Can we make a motion?
It is a nuisance and to be torn, torn down, and we can certainly prioritize that activity.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
I think it was your motion.
Was it my motion?
Yeah, I think we have to say, I think we have to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those in favor? Aye.
Okay. So, we'll vote into...
Close the hearing.
Focus hearing.
Yep.
All in favor?
I will, we're preparing to draft up the motion, the, uh, draft up the orders, signed by Madam Chair, and we will get those out as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next one here is, um, we're going to move back over to executive session.
I assume that I'm done?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jeff, for coming on.
Thank you, guys.
You're done, sir, thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Now, I'd like to move in, a motion to move into executive session for items 3 and 6. 3 is discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, and 6 is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body.
You have a motion that affects...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lincoln, aye?
Snyder, aye.
Coffin, aye.
Okay, and then we reopen again to close the regular meeting.
Only, nor the business.
Nor, nor the business.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?